It is 5:30 on October 22nd and we are here for a special workshop agenda and I would like to call with a full dais, I am calling the city council meeting to order at 5 o'clock.
And?
5:30, 5:30, sorry, 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 5:30.
Although we were a little early, but anyway, I'm not going into that. I'm Gabby Moore, I'm chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission and as soon as Glenn Johnson has takes his oath of office, we will have a full complement also and I'll call meeting to order.
And we owe, I'd like to make two apologies. It's my understanding that in, it was a universal understanding, planning and zoning was and had been called and told the meeting started at 5:15, so we apologize if you guys went, made extra efforts to be here at 5:15 because it was 5:30, but apologize that you were given information that was incorrect. And it's also my understanding that you guys were not provided any backup material for this meeting and so I apologize if there was any confusion with that. Welcome Mr. Johnson. But I think you will find when Mr. Jones makes his presentation, you may have watched the council meeting or you may not have because not everyone enjoys watching council meetings, I don't know why, but there was a lot of discussion, but the actual changes were very few. So he has a detailed summary of the changes and of the discussion and the point of meeting with you guys tonight is because you guys approved the building Bastrop code as written with the understanding that spelling errors and grammar errors and stuff like that would be corrected, but for substantially as the material, that it was approved as written. Then we had a city council meeting and had a discussion about it specifically, a pretty detailed discussion about signs and we also had a discussion about mobile food permits and mobile food vendors. And I want to give recognition both to Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and also to Councilmember Rogers that we wanted to make sure you guys didn't approve something as written and then we voted on something that was a change and you weren't, at the end of the day, as Dr. Lassen has pointed out, we get to vote and the three of them vote makes it so, but we didn't want to be disrespectful of all the time that you've put into it and absolutely wanted to get your input if there, to make sure we had all the best information to consider before we did the vote. It is on the agenda for our council meeting tonight. It will be the second public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance, so there is still yet another reading. So if you guys bring up something in this workshop that council wants to consider making some adjustments to, we still have some time for that. So it's 11th hour, but it's not, but it's not completely done and that's why we thought it was real important to get together. Do you have any questions before we start? Does that help at all Chairman Moore, Chairwoman Moore? She's not very happy with me. Okay, with that, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Jones and today is October 22nd and it is also Mr. Jones' last day to be an employee of the City of Bastrop. And that day ends at midnight and we plan to get every last moment of work out of him. And in fact, Matt, when they told me, well, the planning department called and told us this meeting started at 5:15, I was like, well, that's it, Matt's not coming back. So.
He looks, he looks so very happy today. I mean, I've never seen him look so happy.
City staff had a lunch for Mr. Jones today and I think all of us recognize what a stellar person he is and how much he's brought to the city. Let's give Mr. Jones a round of applause. So it's your last, last performance before this illustrious body of planning and zoning. Let's hope you knock it out of the park, Mr. Jones.
Well, I, I, I'll repeat the apologies. We didn't send anything out beforehand, but I think when we take a look at the list, it's not a lot of substantive changes, but again, it's just kind of things that we had talked about with PMZs, so we're just going to go over them. So the two big things that were discussed were signs and mobile food regulations. So the, the main thing, or one of the main things we talked about were how do we treat temporary signs? And at the end of the day, we, we had some things that were going to be roll, or that council wanted to roll forward out of the existing regulations when it comes to dealing with temporary signs. And a couple of those were banners and we took a look at those regulations and what they are today and given the circumstance where we actually have some banners ourselves on light poles, on banner plaza and some of those other things, we didn't want to have regulations that prohibited those types of signage. And so council decided that they would like to roll forward the banner language from the existing code, so they'll be allowed for certain periods during the year, up to, I believe it's 12 weeks. And then the size limitations that are on them currently will roll forward as well. So they're still allowed throughout the year with a permit. You can have it all at once or you can have a few throughout the year. The light pole banners that you see downtown and other areas, those were also kind of prohibited by the new code and now those will also be allowed. So those have been written back into the code to allow those, those banners on the light poles to continue. And then we discussed bandit signs in a couple of different ways. And bandit signs are, they're allowed for news, new subdivisions, but they're only allowed Friday through Monday mornings during certain times and then they have to be picked up. Council did express again the desire to move towards a more master plan wayfinding and, and residential real estate program. We do have one of those that will be coming forward here in the next few meetings that you all heard from KB Holmes that they'll be presenting that. But that is something that will roll forward, the bandit signs to the new codes. And then also we had prohibited changeable copy signs in the new code and that's one thing that council wanted to change. There's a handful of those throughout the city today and they wanted to see those be able to continue. So that prohibition of the changeable copy signs has been removed. And then of course, the regarding content, when it comes to signs, we didn't want to have to read it to be able to regulate it. And so in any language that had to deal with content in the sign regulations were removed. When we talked about mobile food regulations, how did pretty?
Can we hang on a minute?
Yes.
I would like to know if the commission has any questions?
Sure.
About any of the signs?
I've got a question. Comparing, I, I was, studied it over the weekend and came, flew back Friday, Sunday morning and was amazed at how many violations of the sign ordinance currently exist. Is there a, have we discussed the enforcement of the sign ordinance because it, are we just going to have a lot of non-conforming permits issued?
Can you give an example like?
Well, for example.
Are you talking about?
For example, goods are not to be used as a sign, but every car dealer in Bastrop County has automobiles up on ramps advertising that they're a car dealer. Now, they can be non-conforming for one year, but next year they'll be all new, they'll have removed all those cars. So that was just one example of, also flags, banners, balloons, nearly all the prohibited signs in the ordinance, you can see on 71 in our ETJ.
Well, as far as code enforcement, that would fall, the sign regulations would fall into code enforcement. I, I do know that we're, it's, it's more of a complaint based. Now, we do go out, the, the city manager has made it very clear about utility poles and other things, so the, the code enforcement does do a good job of picking up those types of prohibited signs. But if it's something that we need to take a look into as far as enforcement in the ETJ or other areas of the town, we can certainly do that.
The other question I had was, well, two questions. The current code has political signs as exempt. That has been removed from that.
Mr. Johnson, two things. One, the political signs are regulated by state law and the, the philosophy that we've taken to ensure that we don't fall into the same trap going forward that we've done in the past, that if it is a state law mandate, we don't reference it, we just let the state law rule. And the state law regulates political signs pretty significantly. We have a number of things in this community that are being done that are in violation of our codes. Part of the challenge has been the codes are in some instances difficult to understand and difficult to enforce. So, once the codes are adopted, it has been driven by council that we should first educate and help people understand what the rules are so that we can hopefully gain voluntary compliance before we start writing and issuing citations. So, once we get the codes and we can all understand what they are, then, then we will be doing a campaign, if you will, to not only educate about the, the Bastrop building block codes that we refer to as the B3 codes, but the new international building codes and fire codes, because we have a lot of construction that occurs in town that people don't come and get permits for. So we, we have a lot of behavior that we need to educate and change. But anywhere there's been a state law issue relative to political signs or something like that, if there's a violation, we'll just refer to the state law and we'll use that as a basis to do any type of enforcement and then ensure when we get to municipal court that it stands up.
So should there be a reference then to the state law that that supersedes the code and that that law would be enforced? I, I know we, in the old sign ordinance, we referenced the local government code, Chapter 216, as being the authority for what the city does.
I'll defer that to the city attorney, but I think we just left it out knowing that political signs were legislated by the state.
One of the things, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we have like 63 or 66 signs in the old ordinance? So part of what we're trying to do with this one is clean it up.
To, to clarify that, categories. There was 56 different categories of signs, so it was difficult for staff to even figure out what was allowed or not.
And that's what, that was, made some of the enforcement difficult, so.
No, I understand that and not, when my wife opened a business and gave me the sign ordinance, says, "Read this," and being an attorney, I like to read legal documents. I said, "No, go talk to Trey Joe and see what we can do and can't do." But the other thing, and I appreciate the idea of the enforcement, but I don't want it to be a selective enforcement where someone that, that doesn't like that business or doesn't like that whatever, files a complaint and that business gets enforced against and everybody else is re. The other thing that I'm concerned about, another legal matter, is the, the Latin term is mens rea, that we, we removed the mental. You don't have to prove that you had an intent to commit in certain cases and that, that bothers me because especially if people don't understand, you know, that they read the sign ordinance and they get, or they don't understand where the wide of way is or they're told improperly, or they put a sign up because two years ago, Mr. X allowed me to put a sign in his yard and now he doesn't want me to put a sign in my yard, in his yard. So I, I am concerned about taking away the necessity, if we are going to enforce it, that the defense of, no, there was no intent to commit a violation, that that would be left or not taken out of the due process requirements that we all live under.
I'm, I'm not sure it's been taken out. I think it's just been put in another place. The premise behind the B3 codes is we're not going to regulate uses, we're going to treat things as a nuisance. And so we're in the process of rewriting all of our nuisances and on the 12th and the 26th of November, we're bringing back wholesale changes to the code of ordinances to do the very thing that you're looking for. When we did a search of code of ordinances, much like the mayor referenced with the sign ordinance, there were 56 categories. I think chief, there was 152 different nuisances in all 13 chapters and it was, it was brain damaged the day staff went through and attempted to figure out where that is and what that looks like. So we're in the process of putting together a structure so you don't need you, no offense, but you don't need an attorney to read the code of ordinances to figure out what we want. It needs to be common sense, it needs to make sense. So that's what we're doing and we'll be bringing it back to the council in November so that all of the enforcement powers are very clear, not only from what can we deal with you from an enforcement on a civil perspective, but what constitutes criminal enforcement. So we're going to be taking care of all of that from a nuisance perspective and not have the enforcement from a use perspective or the penalties here, but treat everything as a nuisance. So that's an important component, but it'll be in the code of ordinances and they'll deal with that in November.
And I apologize for taking up too much time, but I came in late on this process and I'm trying to do my best to paddle, pedal fast enough to catch up, so, thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I, may I speak also? Not to belabor the point, but I think Mr. Johnson had a good point there about some of the laws and things that supersede, that are superseded by the state and maybe federal government things, maybe just a simple sentence saying that those, there are certain laws that are superseded by the state or other agencies that aren't listed in our codes because that, because most citizens won't realize that and they probably have the same question that I think he just asked.
I, I, I'll let Alan speak to that, but I think part of the deal is they, they're not being superseded because if they're regulated by the state, there are no city regulations on it. So there's nothing to supersede. It's, if you search political signs, you're going to find, you're going to be directed to the Texas code. But Alan, do you have a comment on that?
Just to say that, just to say that we have no legal requirement to repeat codes that are already in state law and we have no requirement to tell them, "We're not enforcing a law here because Texas has adopted a law over there." And so the approach we've taken to our code going forward is that we will only have the City of Bastrop's ordinances that have been adopted by the city council in our code.
Is that agreeable, Councilmember Jackson?
I, I tend to differ, but I mean, you know, I'm just one person.
Councilmember Ennis, you look like you want to say something.
Does it, I've forgotten, do we have a reference? I mean, if you want to look at political signs, does it say, refer? That's what he's asking for.
So we could do that in the definitions or something.
Where do you stop? There's an awful lot of state laws we don't reference anywhere because the state law takes care of them. And, and I think that that is Alan's point. We, we built all of these codes on the premise of only including the things that as a home rule city that you care about making us authentic Bastrop. So if we start referencing state law, where will we start, where will we stop? Because we haven't talked about the health codes that we count on from the state, we've not talked about sanitation, we've not talked about all of the other things and, and we could, I'm happy to do whatever you want, but I'm just telling you the unintended consequence and that's part of what made our codes very complex is, is that we tried to reference the state law and we'd reference them every place that they were needed, but when it changed, we'd only find one of the three. And so we changed one and then we, when we'd find the other, it was in conflict with one and there started the vicious circle that we've worked very hard over the last year to not do. So I, we'll do whatever you want. I'm just offering the, the concern of all of the state laws and the federal laws that we have to follow every day and where, where will we start and stop with that?
I'm not asking that we list all of those laws, I'm just saying that we make a simple statement addressing the fact that they will not be included because we are a home rule city or something to that effect. I don't want all those listed, I don't want to complicate the code even more, but I think a simple reference would suffice.
Councilmember Rogers, I think you're.
I, I think if I understand what Doc, Mr. Jackson, Councilwoman Jackson was asking for.
Doc, Jackson, which one do you want me to say?
Is, is just political signs, see state law. I mean, that's all he's asking for. That way we don't have to change it when the state law changes. All he's saying is if you're looking for it, you know where to go look. He's not asking for you to reference it, he's just asking for a simple, and you could put that at the beginning of the, the whole ordinance for anything that's in this. If you don't find this, look in the state law, maybe they have it, you know?
And I think the, some of the health code and other, we don't have a chapter on health code, but we have a chapter on signs. So it, you know, if we, political signs regulated by the state.
So could we put that in the table of contents where you go to look for it?
I think that's fine. Is it, does that make sense to you guys?
Okay.
Councilmember Jackson, that's agreeable? Everybody's okay?
Thank you.
See not guesses? Okay.
That, you know, the, the point being that, you know, political signs were exempt under the old code and now they're not, they're not mentioned and so I don't want the staff to have to deal with lots of complaints about people who don't like the political sign their neighbors put up.
Okay. Do you, I have one quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
How are you going to treat garage sale signs or bandit signs?
So I believe garage sale signs are under the exempt. Let me verify that real quick. I believe it specifically lists out garage sale signs.
Did or did not?
Does.
Okay.
Matt, if I was, if, I believe he has it.
We moved that, so. I'm, I'm sorry?
I was going to say, I think you have it as the same rules as those bandits, they have to go out on Friday.
So it was not in the current draft, but that's one of the temporary ones that moved forward as a bandit sign. So again, they have hours that they can be out and they're now allowed.
And that's the same rules that we have now?
It's the same, yeah, we rolled those forward.
Did that answer your question?
I wasn't sure, so.
No, no, that's a good question. Are you guys okay on the, allowing the banners and the banners on the light poles? We, we thought it was silly to be in violation, first rattle out of the box, the city be in violation, so we thought it was a good idea to include that stuff. Okay, is that it on signs? Is there anything else we need to talk?
Yes, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Rogers?
On, on the page when you're listing the, the, your signs that are prohibited and you have banners and I understand you put the temporary, but like you did on the pole sign, then you put a slash and except in this area? Maybe you put a slash and say, "See temporary," so they understand that there is some, but see the temporary section because you have it listed as exempt, but then later you list it where it's allowed somewhere else, so just.
Your mic's not on.
Well, you have it listed as a banner, but I was saying, just make a little slash and tell them to see temporary so they can see where the banners are allowed, since you.
So under the prohibited, where they are listed as a temporary one, notify that in that section also.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and y'all have a question? Great. I'm sure my son.
Please stop the property in the ETJ without affirmative.
Sir, if you will, look on page 173, it's considered an exempt sign and does not require a permit.
Do you know what page it says that? Because I was with Linda, I was under the, it's exempt.
Thank you for showing us that. It will be deleted.
179. Yep.
So Jordan, it's on page 179, last paragraph, G.
Thank you, Greg. I knew we should have this meeting.
Great. Anybody else?
People more than just pretty faces. We really read and we understand and have the city's best interests at heart.
Pablo, got anything we need to know? All right. That's it on signs? Anything else we need to talk about, Matt, on sign?
No, I don't believe so.
Council, do you, Councilmember Jackson?
Just one more thing and I may have overlooked it and I didn't, unfortunately left my book at home. You know, my issue earlier about monument signs, was that addressed? Are we going to work with that or what's the latest on that?
Yeah, so we heard you loud and clear and it's the visibility triangle and it will be addressed in the code that you adopt.
Does that mean it's in this version or not in this version?
It is in this version.
And what page is it on?
I don't, I don't have the updated version in front of me.
Jordan?
We will ask Jordan to find it. Councilmember Jackson, part of the challenge is, has been enforcing our requirements and so now with our construction manager and our building inspector and our building official and our fire inspector and our fire chief, we now have a lot of folks out there that are making sure that the right things get inspected. So even if the rules today reflect what the rules were, there's no guarantee that it was installed according to the rules. So as, as important as the rules are, the enforcement piece is, is bigger. So those will be things that when we do our reviews and our field inspections, we'll make sure that that site visibility triangle from a life safety standpoint is honored and enforced.
Thank you.
Have a more, I just, I remember a note. When we talk about the height of the sign, and I'm just reading what it says on my version that I have, a freestanding sign with a single multiple pin, no more than 35 feet in height and having a racial blessing. Can we add to that from, from the, that spot, that elevation because is, there was some concern that you take that, if the road is higher, can I have a higher sign because, you know, the topography would mean that I need to have a higher sign and I think just to help clarify that for everyone, can we stipulate where that happens?
I think they did reword it in the new version, so I'm sorry you didn't get that one.
Yeah, we did have an extensive discussion about that. Welcome, Matt Lewis. Now the Matts are together.
Commissioner, that actually is defined in here, it's on page 197, under.
Matt, he doesn't have the new one.
With the calculations. It's, oh, this is, oh, okay.
It's on the link, isn't it? Isn't the new one posted?
Yep. This is the 10th quarter draft.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read this out loud?
Please.
It says, "Maximum total height is measured from the finished grade at the center of the sign. If the finished grade at the center of the sign is higher than the finished grade at the closest pavement surface, then the height shall be measured from the finished grade of the closest pavement surface." So that's the way that it's currently written and so it would, would basically move based off of where the finished grade of the pavement surface would be.
So on, if the street is higher, they could go, they would take that finished grade at, and so you could potentially have a 50-foot sign next to a building?
Hopefully not and, you know, it's, if the finished grade is that much significantly higher than, than the building, I mean, it would be an odd scenario for that to occur.
So I think the goal is, is if you're riding down the street, you have no idea how tall the signs actually are other than the height matches. So that if you are below grade, you aren't at a distinct disadvantage because you've lost 10 feet. That, that's the intent, correct?
And it would be at the street? What if you're on the highway and the highway is elevated and, and I'm thinking of the situation that came up recently. You're on the highway and the highway is 25 feet above that grade.
It would be the nearest pavement, which would be the service road, not the elevated highway.
It, it would be off the frontage road because they aren't going to allow a pole sign on the elevated highway.
That makes it really clear.
And so if they, if the business comes and they want higher, they would have to come on a case-by-case variance and say, "Well, but if I'm at 30." and say, "Well, but if I'm at thirty-five feet, uh, you can't," you know, and, but, and counsel, uh, my memory is when we discussed it, we said we would do that on a case-by-case basis, rather than increasing the height, and that's why we wanted to stay at thirty-five. Councilmember Rogers, am I remembering that correctly? Okay? So does that make sense? Everybody clear on that? It's the closest pavement to that, to the pole sign? Okay, alright, any more signs? Questions, sign pages? Okay. Mr. Ju- Council, I asked, uh, Council, any more questions? Everybody okay? Mr. Peterson's okay, alright. Matt? Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so another thing that we talked about were the mobile food ordinances.
So the mayor and I had a conversation this afternoon, because Councilmember Rogers has asked a great question, and I have done a complete brain dump. And so, when I visited with, um, staff, um, I think that I've stepped outside of my lane, so, um, the, the, what was left with staff was we were gonna leave mobile food regulations in, we were gonna remove the fees, we were gonna remove the permanent hours, uh, or leave the permanent hours of, we were gonna remove the hours of operation, and if they wanted permanent connections to the utilities, then they became a restaurant. And then there was some concern as to whether or not that needed to be in the ordinance or not. And I offered to take it out, and we could put it in the code of ordinances separately, if that is your pleasure. So before we get into this, I probably need some direction from counsel. Are you fine leaving it in, the B-three codes? It, it no longer is a temporary mobile food truck, uh, ordinance, it's permanent. Uh, what it allows is for hours of operation to be market-driven. Um, there are no permanent utility connections, it truly has to be mobile. And if you want permanent, you have to come in and, and ask and go through a process with y'all. So if you're fine leaving it in the code, then we'll talk about it, because it's B-three. If y'all want it taken out, then it's not a topic of conversation for B-three.
So counsel, the rest of that is back when we got the very first draft of the code. It was the temporary ordinance, because that was the only thing that existed. And that pilot program was expiring on November first. So when we had the sign permit discussion, that night at that council meeting in a galaxy far, far away, we also talked about the, the mobile food regulations, and there was quite a bit of back and forth about that. And the following day, the city manager had said, "You know, we didn't have mobile food in the original ordinances, if that's clogging the works, it's the temporary ordinance anyway, we can just take it out and deal with it separately." At this point, as she said, it's in there now. It has the comments that we asked them to address, you've had an opportunity to review it, but the real question, and I apologize to planning and zoning, cause this really is a counsel question, do you want to leave it as a part of B-three, or do you want to pull it out? Mayor Protem Nelson?
Is there, is there any reason not to allow it to remain in? Is there any reason to remove them? So I'd see no reason to not keep them in the code.
So if you're not keeping them in, does that mean you are keeping them in? You're not not taking them out?
I am not, I, there, there you are, I am not, not ta- I am not, not taking them out.
So we're leaving them in?
That's correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I, I don't see why they're actually in the code to begin with, it's all about building roads, everything else that has nothing to do with food and trucks. So it was, it was strange for me to actually see it in there in the first place. I, I, I see it going forward, it's gonna be something driven, I mean, who would've thought we would've had mobile food trucks twenty years ago? So I think it's gonna be something that's probably gonna be updated quite a bit. So I would think it would be a code by itself, but that's just my personal opinion.
So I got one in, one out. Councilmember Peterson? I got two in, one out. Councilmember Jackson?
Oh.
Two in, two out. We're all looking at you, Councilmember Ennis.
I second, uh, uh, Councilmember Rogers, because I think it's, we're still finding our way with this. It, it's new to us, and we're gonna be making lots of changes.
So we're going to take it out, we will deal with it separately, we will deal with it at the November council meeting. Now, Matt Jones and city manager, would it be appropriate to let planning and zoning vet through it before it comes to us?
When you take it out of this code, it no longer becomes a zoning issue.
Okay.
Uh, it becomes a food and health issue, for which there is no jurisdiction for, um, uh, planning and zoning.
Sorry.
Um, and to further support, uh, Councilmember Rogers' position, if we're going to be changing it, if it stays in the zoning code, it triggers public notice and public hearing notifications that in other sections of the code would make it easier and less problematic for you to change it. So we could support that.
Chairwoman Moore, did you have a comment?
At one point, many years ago, we had begun discussions on, um, mobile food trucks. But I guess that's when we were dealing with it from a zoning standpoint. Um, and then it went away with the moratorium and the B-three and all that good stuff, so.
Well, it may also-
We haven't looked at it in a while.
And that may also have been back when zoning was use driven.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that was a use, so. Um, okay, so it sounds like we don't need to talk about mobile food regulations, because we're going to pull it out of the B-three code, because it really is more health-oriented. And counsel, uh, staff will bring that back to counsel in November. And I'm fine with all of that, but we need to recognize that means that we will not have a mobile food ordinance from November first until such time that we get something approved. Unless, city attorney, can we add thirty days to the temporary one that we have? Well, let me ask this, do we have anybody with a permit?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okey-dokey.
So yeah, we got one in, and it, it was a, it was a snow cone, it was a snow cone stand.
Are they, and are they still in operation?
I'd have to check, it's, uh, no, they're not. I'm sorry?
She's on, is the one on Chestnut? It's a snow cone stand that was on Chestnut?
No, I believe it was over, uh, close to the Walmart.
That, that was a mobile, yeah, he, he's retired.
He's retired, so.
Okay, well, if we don't have, I just don't want us to intentionally, somebody thought they were doing a pilot, and then there was gonna be a permanent rule on November first, and then they get not treated properly. So, um, if we don't have any, then I, we, I'm sure counsel is encouraging staff to bring us something that we can look at at the first meeting in November. Is that true, counsel? Except for the two of you that were leaving in?
Mayor and counsel, it will look just like it looks now, except it will be in a separate document.
So if counsel has questions or comments, we need to share them?
Yes, if not, it will be replicated and will only be in a different place for purposes of future codification.
Okay, and that, uh, for planning and zoning and for any citizen, that means that you have access to it, because it's, um, I believe we're in page, in around the page three hundred of today's council packet. So if you have questions or comments, please share that with staff or with counsel. So that means we don't need to talk about mobile food, correct?
Except, can I make a comment?
Absolutely. Councilmember Rogers?
The whole point, just like Matt, wasn't sure if anybody was out there doing it. That was my whole point of having the permits renewed for some reason, so that way we would know whether we had people out there with a permit or not. So that kinda showed my whole point of it, we need to know whether they're still actually out there selling hot dogs or not.
And I think it would be helpful from a health inspection or anything else that we know we have X amount of active permits in town at this time.
I have a comment.
Absolutely.
So I'm just sharing information. I, I worked on a project in, uh, Taylor, and this individual bought some land, it was a corner, empty lot, and there was no clarity in, in, as well, for the development of it, and he wanted to put an ice machine and a mobile food truck. And we worked with the city on that, and it was because there was real no clarity on it, and that's, um, I think it's good that we look at it, but you may have situations where you have lots, and I know we talked about trying to do everything residential on scale. I just wanna know how that fit with what, how we thought about it that far.
Um, I think the answer to that is this, um, everything in this code is what, um, there's clarity that staff can, can be involved in. And council's discussion relative to mobile food trucks are, is when the, they choose to become permanent and stationary, they're not really mobile anymore. Um, and that becomes a policy, uh, question, um, because at that point in time, you're now, um, competing with brick and mortar. And so, we're not saying you can't do it, we're just saying that it won't be addressed by right at a staff level. There's just a process to bring it from a policy, as the mayor said, on a case-by-case basis.
Does that make sense, Pablo?
I, I understand the, the goal is the competition part of it, I know we're trying to protect, uh, brick and mortar, that's why I get the feeling from it. Um, I'm just thinking about that individual, that there's a small piece of land, it really, you can't fit a whole lot on it, but you could fit, you could park a, a, a mobile food vending unit truck, or even an ice machine, and that could service the neighborhood. So I don't know how those fit within the context of what we're trying to do, but this individual found a really small piece of land, got it for a great price, was trying to do something good for the community, so I, I don't know how that-
Well, and I think the intent is that this mobile food will come back, it'll be in ordinance, and they would have a methodology and a, a process to do it. That, that's the intent, correct, counsel? For, Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I have a question now that he, he brought up a good, good scenario, meaning, I mean, I don't know how we're, we're on a policy-wise, whether the mobile food truck is considered a business, is it not considered a business? So if I bought the empty lot next to Bill Ennis, and I put my mobile food truck, is that against the ordinance in P-two, three, whatever that is? I'm just wondering, I, I wanna make sure that, like he's saying, if I happen to buy that piece of lot, is that, is a mobile food truck considered a business? Because I can move it on and off.
Um, I, I heard something different, so, so let me attempt to address, um, your question. The mobile, um, food permits ordinance has the, um, appropriateness lined out as to where you can and can't do it, and what you must do with it. Does it speak to whether or not they can park in residential or not?
So you cannot have a commercial use in P-three residential, uh, temporary or non. Um, and it does have language in there that also addresses, uh, operating in public rights of way. And so if you were out in the street, for example, you'd also have to have, uh, permission from the city to do that. But you cannot operate commercial in, in a P-three district.
But that's a use, right? And I thought we weren't regulating uses.
Well, but P-three, P-three is only a residential district.
Okay, I just wanna ma- I just wanna make sure that, like he was saying, I wanna make sure we're covered.
That's right.
That it's, it's, it's in there somewhere.
But what I heard from him was, is that we've got a really cool piece of property that's not big enough to build brick and mortar on. So the only way to use it would be to put a food truck and an ice, uh, machine on it. In that instance, we'd bring that back and policy would deal with it and go, "Oh, well, brick and mortar doesn't work there." This, if landscaped or whatever they wanna do makes sense, then that becomes the policy decision.
But then that, that becomes a conversation at counsel where neighbors have an opportunity to comment, and, and we get feedback, and it's not just like, you came home one day and it's like, "Whoa, when, when did that happen?" There, it would have to come to counsel, is what I think you're saying.
Yes, because that's an, an out of the ordinary. What we try to do with this code is deal with the probable. But we can what-if this to death. Well, the what-ifs are why you elect counsel to make policy decisions. So, we, we have a mechanism that when we come in and it doesn't fit this book, we're not telling you, "No." We're just telling you, you, you have to go through the process. And the process is, you pledge your case to PMZ, y'all make a recommendation, counsel hears it, there's public hearings, and we collectively decide as a community whether or not that works.
Okay, except you just said something that confuses me, because if it's not a part of the B-three code, would they be pleading their case to PMZ?
Um, you know, in the case of a mobile, um, um, food, um, I would argue based the way that your, um, your codes are written, that when you take the wheels off and attach to utility, um, it ceases to be mobile, and it becomes a variation of a brick and mortar, and-
But what if it's mobile?
Um, again, that's a policy question.
Okay.
But if he's gonna be parked there-
No, no, I'm getting back to, it's mobile, it's not in the B-three code, is it going to PMZ?
Okay, so, let me make sure, and, and Pablo, you qualify. Was he going to be permanently located there with the food truck?
So the state has some mobile, I looked into it a little bit farther. So the state has an umbrella, how any county or, or city can do their own thing, which is what we're attempting to do. But if you didn't have that, the state has their own guidelines. And one of the things is, this vehicle has to be on wheels, it has to be checked out and driven to a station once a year, but they can go right back and park where they're at. So, I don't know how mobile that, it's mobile, but it's semi-permanent, in my opinion.
Once a year mobile?
So, it, it boils down to the, the same conversation that we're having with the gentleman that has reached out to y'all. He wants permanent utilities. And we're saying, "No, we're not gonna give you permanent utilities."
You're answering a different question. What I'm trying to clarify is when we went around the room and said whether or not we were leaving it in B-three, and we said, "It's really about food and health, so we're taking it out of B-three, because it's not gonna go through zoning," and the ISO will, so will, and so it's, the, the, the ordinance isn't going to planning and zoning, so why would, when you gave your example, you said they'd go plead their case to planning and zoning, and I'm at, why?
I, I'm making the assumption that at that point in time, they're going to be permanent. Because they're buying a piece of property that's not available for a restaurant, and the way to achieve a restaurant is not through brick and mortar, but from a mobile-type deal. So that was the perspective, I answered that. If it's still going to be mobile, my answer would be is it's not a zoning issue-
And it will come to counsel.
If it meets the intent of your mobile food permit.
And if someone wants something that, um, staff can't sign off on, they always have the opportunity to come to counsel?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it just confused me when it was, it's not in zoning, and then, well, they can go plead their case to planning and zoning, so that's-
So I was taking the conduit of the mobile truck to become the brick and mortar, because the brick and mortar wouldn't fit on the little site with the ice machine.
Okay, are you guys clear with that?
Just a question, or maybe a statement, um, Councilmember Rogers brought up at the beginning about the place types, and is that allowed, the question for clarification? So when policy is made on the food trucks, will there be statement and clarification on the place types? Where it's allowed, where it's not? I mean, we know it's commercial and it's not residential, but reference to place types on policy?
Yeah, I, I would think the answer to that is yes, because otherwise, staff won't know what they can sign off on and what has to come to counsel. And, uh, Matt Jones had made the comment about getting a permit for a mobile truck, like in the right-of-way, and what I think of is, like, if it's homecoming parade weekend, and somebody wants to pull up a mobile food truck and sell tacos in a right-of-way where the roads close for a certain number of hours, that, that would be a permit where it would make sense that it couldn't be there all the time, tho- those kind of exceptions. But that's completely different than, "I'm buying a lot in a, that is zoned P-three, and I'm now going to establish a business," which I think was the point of, there is no commercial business allowed in P-three.
And, and I think, um, Commissioner, um, Mayor brings up a very good point. Since we're gonna be taking this out, we will clarify to reference, um, what place types this is allowed, since it's not going to be residing in this, so-
Yeah.
When we bring it back to you, we'll make sure it's appropriate as a standalone document.
Great, Councilmember Rogers?
Well, uh, you actually brought up another situation. Will it reference something for whenever it is just a vendor, like for a festival, compared to a food truck that needs a whole two, four hundred dollars that they're not gonna make in three hours?
Um, yes, ma'am, we issue, um, uh, special event permits as a part of the process, and they are very clear in the date that they are for, and they do expire.
Oh, no, I knew we did, I was just saying you might wanna reference it in the mobile food truck, so they know if I don't wanna be here all the time, I can go, go see the vendor one, that's what I was asking for.
That's a great clarification. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Well, we also differentiate between a, uh, for-profit from a not-for-profit entity, uh, setting up a temporary trailer, food trailer, but it's gonna be done.
We don't currently.
So if a, if a, if a student group was selling snow cones to, to make band money, not looking to turn a profit, we're going to charge them the same permit rate that we would Joe from out of, I hate to get into details, but these are some things we need to work out.
So I hope, and, and I'm going to be looking at Chief Ogelt through you, through Tanya, as he's smiling at me, that we don't make the news, because we have failed to exercise common sense and good prudence between children raising band money and somebody selling hot dogs for a profit. Um, so I'm hopeful that we will exercise good common sense, so that we don't have to protect ourselves from ourselves. But I hear you, sir.
But we, we still have to have health and safety as a, I mean, snow cones is one thing, wrapped candy bars is another, and we-
Yes.
Common sense needs to prevail in all of this.
I, I don't want the governor supporting the lemonade stand- I, I don't want the governor supporting the lemonade stand, because we did something wrong.
Because Lyle Nelson, that's N-E-L-S-O-N.
But there are times when common sense is quite rare.
Yes, 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 not as common as it needs to be. Okay, so, Matt, is there other changes from what PMZ approved as written?
No, ma'am, and y'all actually took those recommendations, uh, the other changes, so.
Yeah, yeah, that, you guys made a few changes when you went to, well, you made many changes, and said it was writ, as written as you guys had made the changes to, so those were all accepted. So, um, what you guys voted on, now we are taking out the mobile food chapter, that will come back as a separate ordinance to council, and we've made the adjustments to the signs. Is there any, anything else that you, you know, and you can bring up something else, it's been a couple of weeks. Pablo, am I gonna regret giving you that open door?
I, uh, scenic corridor, establishment of scenic corridor, and I don't know, uh, as an overlay of some kind, or is, is that, I don't know how that turned out regarding signage. I can restate it again, scenic corridor, or some, are we, I just wanna have that.
It, it's not in the codes today.
I think that ship has sailed on seventy-one.
Yeah.
And there, and we, we agreed that it would be, uh, council agreed with your recommendation that there are no pole signs allowed on ninety-five, and so if people want new ones, that will be a case-by-case basis. So we weren't gonna try to differentiate things.
Yes.
So trying to keep that, and I, I believe that's what you guys brought forward, so, we agreed. Okay. Chairman Moore, Chairwoman Moore, is there anything else that you want to discuss?
Not that I know of, does any commissioner have anything to say?
Counsel? I want to, once again, tell you guys thank you so, so very much, really appreciate it. You, we have gotten more than our money's worth, you guys have worked really, really hard, it is very much appreciated. And again, apologize that you were given five fifteen as a start time, I, I'm very regretful of that.
And I think it's not fair that Ishmael and Glenn are coming on now when everything's done, and they're gonna be able to escape for a while.
Well, speaking of that, one of the things that, um, and it was actually a suggestion that I made, and council was agreeing to, was giving, listing the names of the other, uh, planning and zoning members that were a part of all of the hard work, and we are also, uh, mentioning Councilmember Jones for, and, and she was y'all's, um, PMZ liaison. So to your point, we want to give credit where credit is due, and we expect Ishmael and Glenn to have everything memorized by the next PMZ meeting, so there will be a test that, that follows. Council, do you have any other comments or questions? Okay, it is six twenty-four, and council is adjourned.
Mayor and council, um, before we break, we have to break down this room and put it back. So I'm gonna ask everybody if they're seated, if you wouldn't mind relinquishing your chair just a moment. Staff needs to get these tables back, we'll set it back, and you can move to the front, and we'll get it arranged as quickly as we can.
And planning and zoning, and council, she's, that also means move, please, cause they're-
And we are adjourned.
Okay, six twenty-five, we're adjourned, six twenty-five, we're adjourned, thank you.